...at 6:30 PM. Thank you for showing up early, 30 minutes early. We are going to have our meetings at 6:30 from now on. Try to get everybody out here earlier than normal. I have invited Ron Murphy from the Morning Chapel Sammy Church to open us in prayer. Ron, if you could.
First, I'd like to say that we are honored to be here. Would you all follow me, please? Most gracious heavenly Father, we come today praising Thee as God above all Almighty, Master of the universe, Owner of all things, Maker of things. Thank you, Lord, for all the goodness, mercy, and grace. We ask that you lead these proceedings to be followed in accordance with the rule of law. Help us, save us, forgive us. And Jesus, may one pray. Amen.
I am the nation's civic flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and not a war, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am the flag of the nation's being a Texas one state and we are God, one and indivisible.
This is for non-agenda items. It looks like at this time we don't have any non-agenda items. Anybody want to sign up real quick? We are moving on to item number five, approved over minutes from the December 30, 2011 meeting.
Mayor, on item number five, citizens' communications, Lori Armstrong made presentation last month, and I don't see her noted as that. Well, it was recycling, but it was Lori Armstrong, and I don't see her name listed here to include her in her presentation.
Also, if I remember correctly, I was already up here by then, so there's sort of a miss when things happen because I was up here when they came and handed out the things for us to look at, so I don't think it was that time. So, when's it been in the same time frame? If I can remember correctly.
Five minutes. You know, there's a lot of agenda, but the agenda was in a different order. But I will change those to a previous session. So, I have a motion to amend the minutes?
Yes, would that change?
Do you have a second? Councilman Mosby, seconds. Fall in favor. Opposed. Motion passes to approve the minutes for the December 30, 2011 meeting with an amendment. Item number sixteen, introduction of incoming Chief of Police.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. We are currently in a transition in the police department, in fact, Sam Barnes, a few of mine's coming over here, where both steps towardly and, of course, organizationally, I've asked Lieutenant Tim Barnes to step in as interim police chief, and he has agreed to do so. And so, I thank you for that, Tim, and I appreciate your service. If I'm not mistaken, it's 20 years this month, or I start in the 20th year, 20 years with the organization this month. So, I appreciate all that you've done previously. Of course, I've not been here long enough to know each of those things, but I'm sure the good folks in this hall can speak to your high ethics and your commitment to serving the people now. So, I would like to present these to you as markers of your chief of police tenure right now, and look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
And also, standing here, I would like to...
...introduction of Director of Public Works and Field Operations.
Well, as you all know, we went out for applications actually when interim City Manager Danny Wheat was here for Public Works Director, and we received some very quality individuals, but none quite like this gentleman next to me, Andrew Figueroa, which he goes by Andy, as you all know. But we're just, I know, I'm absolutely thrilled to have Andy here. He comes to us from the city of Little Elm, which, if you're familiar, is just on the north side of the Dallas metro, has worked in water and other parts of public works for many, many years, starting with the Army, is that correct?
Yes.
And I don't want to mix up the Army, but I appreciate having you here, and I just want you to, as a community, to know that this gentleman is going to be helping us out of some tough spots in terms of public works. And the challenges are going to be huge, but as I said, he's got big shoulders, so I think we're going to be all right, and I know that we're going to be in great hands. So, I'd like you to help me join in welcoming Andy to the city as well.
Well, thank you, Council, and, you know, given me an opportunity to try to serve citizens of Van Alstine. However, as we all know, there's a long road ahead of us as far as public works goes. We have a lot of issues that we have to correct, and the issues that are present right now, they're not going to be fixed overnight. I'll do the best of my ability with the resources that we have present. Some of our resources are limited, and things are going to take time. But we're trying to get policies and stuff into place where, you know, I mean, the biggest thing I've seen since I've gone here is holes being left open after dig sites, and that's not going to be a standard, you know? We do a job, we're going to finish it that day. You know, our roads are needed to repair, and we'll get to that point. We don't have the asphalt layers and all that. You know, you guys purchased a new asphalt pothole fixer. That won't redo the old road, unfortunately. And some of our roads need resurfaced, but also our internal infrastructure needs replaced as well. So, as time goes on, hopefully, we can grow and progress to better and brighter days in the public works department. Like I said, it's a long road ahead, and I'm glad you gave me the opportunity for the challenge I'm up for, so thank you.
Please call up item number eight, introduction of Van Alstine Independent School District Superintendent with a presentation and update on the status of the VA ISB schools. Dr. Dr. Spies?
Mayor, Council, I just want to make a quick note. I asked Dr. Spies to come here this evening in part. We, as a city, haven't really introduced him on our side, and gotten a chance for him to be in front of you all as a council. But I also want to say that he and I visited a couple weeks ago before the Christmas break, and I couldn't be more pleased with where I think we're heading collectively. And when I say collectively, I want you all to know that, and Dr. Spies to know, that we, as a city, are very committed to being a good partner with the schools, and I think everybody in this hall will know that really, as the schools go, the town is going to go. And so, we want to make sure that we are supporting the schools the best that we can, and so you have our community as a city to do that, and our portal as well.
I've got a little handout for the council. It's not, it results, but I could write some others so you can see what the gist of it is. I'd like to just take a couple minutes, and I do appreciate Mr. Rodriguez, and we've talked several times, and we've worked on a couple of things together already, and I do see that there is going to be a very good working relationship between the city and the school district, and we need the city, the city needs us to get where both sides want to go. I was hired in May and was brought in, and the board, I'm sure like you all did with Mr. Rodriguez, had a list of things that we need to get these things accomplished. They were worried about our district curriculum standards and where we were, particularly at the high school, and it's been well publicized that the high school has had some problems with their instructional part and a little bit in this area of discipline. One of the things that they told me is that we need to have consistent discipline throughout the district, that we need good communications, and hopefully, this is helping in that, and that we need to have a sound financial plan since the state of Texas was cutting us. The state said $600,000, and we figured it was $800,000, and it's really going to be closer to a million dollars this year. And so, and they're bringing on, the state's bringing on new tests this year to raise the level, and of course, giving us a whole lot less to do it with, and that's kind of what the state's known for doing. So far, we have brought on a new administrators team. The only campus administrator back in the same position this year is Mr. Coleman, the principal of the middle school. Both the principal and assistant principal are new at the high school. We moved a principal and assistant principal that were teachers, and, well, the principal at the elementary school was the assistant principal at the middle school, and we brought in a assistant that was a teacher from the middle school as assistant at the elementary school. And also, we brought in a new curriculum director. We haven't had a curriculum director, and we thought that that was necessary to focus on that. We made a lot of cuts, but the curriculum director, we actually added that position so the focus would be on curriculum. We did reduce the budget by $800,000. We have brought in what's called a scope and sequence, which is for every subject that we have, it's what you're going to teach and when you're going to teach it. We're doing six weeks assessments that are developed at the district level to measure the results that the teachers are getting in that, and working with the teachers on using those results to make sure the kids don't fall through the cracks. We've reduced discipline referrals at the high school by 75% so far in the first semester versus the first semester last year, which doesn't mean that we're ignoring discipline. I think we have a very clear understanding with the students on what our expectations are. There's no gray area, and so it's all very black and white. The students know exactly what's expected of them and their performance. And then also, on failure rates, we reduced the failure rates for first semester over first semester last year at the high school by 50%, and we believe that, well, we know that we actually have made classes tougher, but we've reduced failures by 50% so far. And so, that attributed a lot of that to the new high school principal. He's done an outstanding job, and a lot of good things happened. The sheet that's in front of you, many citizens, most citizens are aware that the high school was rated as unacceptable, and that's not going to happen again in this town. That hurts the town, it hurts you, hurts growth of the town, and it hurts the reputation of the district, it hurts the reputation of the city. It's not going to happen again. But I wanted you all, as communicators in this community, to understand why the district was rated, not the district, the high school was rated as unacceptable, and that it's really just a tweaking type thing. If you can tell from various results on here, the tax passage rate in the various subjects, if you look and see how Van Alstine did against surrounding districts and against the state, every item on this sheet, we're above state average, and in many of them, sites were the top in the area. And so, there's a lot of great things happening. What happened at the high school, if you'll notice, our SAT, ACT scores, which are the ready for college, were one of the top in the area, and also, the number of kids taking advanced classes above the surrounding area. What happened in this district, so you know, so you can communicate that to people who are thinking about moving here, is that the average and above-average kids were excelling before I ever got here. They were scoring good, and they were doing great things. If a child fell through the cracks and was struggling, there wasn't a safety net in place. And so, the main thing that we've done is make sure there's a safety net. If a child doesn't have support at home and is not doing his homework, they're doing their homework now. If they don't do their homework, they're staying until it gets done the next day. We just have things in place. If a child is needing tutoring, we have tutoring in every subject before school and after school every day. We're not going to let a child fall through the cracks. We're not an assembly line where we can have a 90% success rate and we can throw away 10%. We've got to have 100% success rate, and so that's what's changed about the district. The two major things have changed. Number one, there is a very strong discipline structure in place, and number two, there's no child that we're going to let fall through the cracks. We're communicating with teachers and parents on a regular basis to see that they do not fall through the cracks. Okay? So, if you hear from people thinking about moving to the district, and they say, hey, you know, we can't do that because we've got a high school again, and they're not going to be taken care of, tell them it's fixed. These kids are performing at a high rate, our teachers are doing a fantastic job, and good things are happening at that high school. And I will tell you also that the thing that doesn't get publicized in our middle school last year was one of the highest-rated middle schools in the state of Texas. There wasn't a problem there. They did incredible things at that middle school, and great things are happening, so all we have to do is continue that at the high school, and we've got the people in place to do that now. Want to say, working with the city, we've had Mr. Rodriguez and I have met several times, we're on the same page, and we're going to make sure that this is the premier town and the premier district in the state of Texas. There's no doubt about it. We have resources that each other can use, and we can help each other out, and we're going to do that, and we're not going to let red tape get in the way. An example of that is when he first got here, I said, I need help. I've got an elementary school, and I've got some major plans to get some things fixed over the Christmas holidays, and I can't have any things holding that project up. And he jumped through hoops, the staff jumped through hoops to see that it was done. We reconfigured the front drive at the elementary school to where there is less cars into that neighborhood, into the Georgetown neighborhood. We increased parking by one-third. We added a security entrance now that funnels people through the main office where they can't get into our building without going through the office. It's safer. Emergency vehicles can now get to our school during dismissal time, where before, there was too much congestion on the streets and stuff. It was good for the city for us to do this project, it was good for us to do this project, and it wouldn't have happened if we were worried about dotting every little i, crossing every little p. And we did pay our dues, our fees and stuff like that, but I've worked with great towns to work with and not-so-great ones, and this project flowed smoothly. We have a lot of stuff done in a two-week timeframe, and I don't think, I don't know if Bill thought that we could get it done in two weeks, but we moved pretty quickly and we got done. Police Department has been fantastic to work with since I've been here. One of our cuts this year is we had to cut our police resource officer at the high school, and Tim Barnes and I have worked very, very closely together. We've had drug awareness programs come in, we have one at the high school tomorrow. We have a joint emergency management drill that's going to happen in the spring that will involve the city and the county and the school district. We'll have a big mock thing at the high school and all the emergency resources in the whole county. And so, we appreciate the commitment from the city and to the school, and we're about to have a meeting with our new public works person, with my maintenance director and Mr. Rodriguez and myself, to see how we can help each other in that light, and we've already had some joint projects where we didn't have the equipment to do something, the city helped out, and then we got the winter rise, the concession stand at the city park that was really the city's. We're going to work together and just get things done. So, I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate you bringing somebody with this quality into this town. We're going to work together, we're going to get great things done, and expect great things from the district, and I'm going to expect great things from the city, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. I probably talked too long, and I apologize for that, but I want you all to know the good story out there. Any questions from... Where did you come from? Where did I come from? A lot of people have that answer, it's probably not a... I, most of my administrative career was in Wyoming, but the last six years, I was in a little district in central Texas as superintendent for a couple of years, and then my last four years was in Malikoff, which is, you know where Cedar Creek Lake is, that takes up the bottom third of Cedar Creek Lake. And I love my job, and we just, I have a blast every day working with kids and working with teachers for the betterment of everybody. If I have any more questions? I appreciate the time, and I apologize, I'm going to play the rest of the time, but I apologize. Y'all have a good evening.
We're going to move on to public hearings. Please call up item number nine. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner, agent of a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as a 0.337 acre portion of a 2.647 acre, of 2.647 acres of abstract number 851, the Ashley McKinney survey, otherwise known as G0851 McKinney Ashley, A G0851, formerly known as 1363 South Waco, rezoned from single-family one to commercial one.
Mayor, Council, this item was brought before planning the zoning commission, and I believe, I believe the chair of that commission is here this evening. Would you like to speak on this item? I know I put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. The commission's recommendation was to...
Do you have a question?
Please, General Assistant Planning and Zoning Commissioner. I'll be very brief. The commission's recommendation was to approve, according to the council approval of a negative commercial now versus the C1 request about the option. I'll be happy to answer the questions on that information.
What's the difference?
Negative, commercial is more restrictive, so there are fewer things allowed in a negative commercial. The owner's agents expressed their desire to open a hair salon that is allowed, but both C1 and A1 are restricted.
If it were to, for some reason, change later and would change hands, the restrictions still hold, correct?
The zoning stays with the property, not the owner.
Thank you. Moving on to second agenda. Please call up item number ten. Authorize the library director to submit an application for a grant from the Texas Book Festival in the amount of $2,000 to purchase non-cational materials.
Mayor, Council, we, I don't know historically, I can't speak to what's historically done on grants, but one of the things that I discussed with staff when we got here was that many grants are going to need to be accepted or denied by this body, and so, before we go out for those grants, I wanted to bring those to you all to ensure that you wanted us to go out for those grants, and so that we can hopefully make that a very streamlined process, and we would like to have, the grants that you want us to pursue will pursue, if there's a grant you don't want us to pursue, we will not do that as well. So, that is why this item is before your mind. If you have any questions, our library director is here this evening. Tracy, would you like to say anything?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. This particular grant is available, excuse me, purely, it is funded by the money that they raise at the annual Texas Book Festival, and so, the grant money then goes out to libraries. We have to submit, in this case, for collection development, a very specific list of actual titles of books that we would like to purchase and explain why we need those for that particular area of collection, so that will go with the application for the funds to buy those books. Are there any questions I can answer?
And also, just as a quick point of order, going forward on the consent agenda, we'll bolt these together so you all can vote on these as one collective item, so if we've got more than one, you can vote on that one item. But I just kind of, I just wanted to make note of that this evening of what these more libraries are bringing these grants to you, so...
The second grant is in hopes of getting $3,029 exactly is the quote, for what's called an early literacy station. It's not an internet-based station, it is a computer, but it's a standalone computer, and it's preloaded with books in Spanish and English that are interactive experience for the children. It's specifically designed to build literacy skills for pre-K through about fifth grade.
Any questions? Thank you, Tracy. See, the key line written number 11 for something we just covered a bit. Authorize the library director to submit an application for a grant from the Quick Sale Foundation in the amount of $3,029 for the purchase of all... AWE, early literacy station. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, non-consent. Does anybody have a motion on items 10 and 11?
I have a motion. We approve the library director's going to submitting the application for each of these items.
Second. Next motion to the thirds, 10 and 11. Open more than second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to regular non-consent. Please call up number 12. Consider and take action regarding a request by the owner, agent of a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as a 0.337 acre portion of 2.647 acres, abstract number 851, the Ashley McKinney survey, otherwise known as G0851 McKinney Ashley, A G0851, formerly known as 1363 South Waco, rezoned from single-family one to commercial one. Do we have Carrie Golding here for this agenda item? Carrie?
I'm Carrie Golding. My main name is Carrie Cameron. I grew up here in Van Alstine, right away from here. Your motion is to approve the zone, C1, commercial, C1, from single-family one.
From single-family to C1, Mark.
The recommendation from P&amp;Z was to go to NC, to follow their recommendation at the neighborhood commercial. I don't know if that changes your motion or not. The P&amp;Z board recommended that it be changed to NC, neighborhood commercial, as opposed to commercial.
I will amend my motion today.
Did we amend it, or can we, because I read it as NC.
Okay, yeah. That was why I was, that was why I wanted to make the motion.
So there's a motion to, as recommended, to approve it as NC. A second by Councilman Campbell, and it passes.
I'll change my vote now. I'll go forward if it's NC. If that may. Just as a point, a question. Should what shows up in ours be what, should what they recommended, instead of being confusing like this?
Well, this was one of those where the application, Councilman Plake, was a commercial form.
Okay.
And then when it went before the planning and zoning commission, they looked at those uses, and so their recommendation was the NC. But this body has the authority to, to move on, on both the original application and the amendment. Of course, the application in this scenario was okay with the idea of doing it in NC. So, so we wrote the item, and I know it's confusing, but the, we wrote the item in the way that, that it was applied for with the recognition, because last night is when the planning and zoning commission met and went ahead and approved their recommendation of NC, so...
Yeah, I just, maybe in the future, we could have something on the motion to say that, you know, the planning, here's what's asked for here, what's recommended by them, so we'd have sort of an easier...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, please call up item number thirteen.
Mayor Council, before, first, secondary, so I wanted to staff pull item number thirteen from consideration this evening. I was hoping that our building inspector and his firm would be here this evening, and he had some personal family health issues that prevented him from being here this evening. So, our thoughts are about to tie into his family, but, so we want to go ahead and pull this item from consideration.
Item number thirteen is being pulled. Moving on to, please call up item number fourteen. Consider and take action regarding the ordinance, making the city of Van Austin building code ordinance, number of five eight five, in order to replace...
Oh, you know what? I'm terribly sorry, I messed up on that. I don't mean to cut you off. I meant to pull fourteen, I'm terribly sorry, for confusion. Fourteen is the one that I need to pull, thirteen is, I would like to review. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, call up item number thirteen. Consider and take action regarding preferred definition for accessory buildings and complementary materials in order to amend said definition in the Complementary Zoning Regulations of the city of Van Austin.
Mayor Council, recall from the last meeting, we looked at this specifically, on what does the meaning of complementary materials mean? And I asked your indulgence in helping me to clarify what that would be, and helping me to amend it if necessary, so that when folks come in and apply for permits for sheds and accessory buildings, groves, anything that's not attached to their current residence, that we know exactly what kind of materials would be preferred by the city council. And so, I emailed a couple of thoughts yesterday to you all, and those were really just kind of a starting point for the discussion, but those were examples from area cities. But I wanted to, this evening, this may be sort of a working definition this evening, until we can sort of agree on something and have y'all move to approve. If we can come to that tonight, then have you remove to approve it. But without gathering all of you as one body, it was difficult for me to try to assess exactly where you wanted to head with that. So, my suggestion, if you'll see from the email yesterday, was that we look at providing exact materials specs for accessory buildings, even if it's something to the effect that, for example, seventy-five percent of the exterior that would be visible to the street or to the public would be the same materials or alike material as the resident, or the prime, the main, the main building. And so, that's just one example of where we could head with this. Really, it's at your discretion how you want us to proceed on that. There's, there's also other cities that have simply said, you know, no metal buildings, or there's others that have said metal buildings with these requirements, such as a concrete slab or professionally engineered metal building of the same color as the primary building. So there's several, there's several ways that we could go with it, but this is what I would like you to help me discuss right now, is to say what, where you would like to head with that as a governing body. So that, and really, this is, I know this is somewhat of a voice in a sense, but for us as staff, it's sometimes difficult to know exactly how to interpret the codes or the ordinances unless we have a little bit more direction, and this is one of those that, the word complementary is, Mr. Frageron showed us at the last meeting, can mean a lot of different things, and can be really in the eye of the interpreter. And since that falls on me and my staff, I want us to be able to have a more comprehensive view of what complementary might mean.
Do we presently have a fully ordinance for this? We did, right?
Yes, yeah. The complementary wording comes out of the arms. Do you happen to have a...
We have copies of that ordinance, so we can see what we have now.
Sorry, I did not bring that in time. It was discussed at the prior meeting, as Mr. Robert said. It was not here.
Well, just with the diversity that we have in the old downtown area, especially in the considerations that we've always given to the old downtown, as it relates to building in general, or like smaller, smaller structures on smaller lots, and there is a diversity here. I mean, we've been just bought everything from A to Z, so it's gonna be like somebody living next to a new structure that wants to improve or build something to house their lawn equipment or whatever, and there, the argument that could possibly come is the person that now lives next door, that in a newer structure compared to someone that's been there, or a building that's been there for fifty or sixty or more years, in all fairness to everybody, that's gonna create possibly a little bit of issue. Now, someone that has to put something out there to complement, we'll use that word, the, if it's a brick structure or something, and seventy-five percent of it is facing the street, and it has to complement itself with having a brick veneer on it, in regard to somebody that's living in, say, a wood structure next door or down the street, that could complement it simply by having a pre-manufactured unit brought in and placed, because complementary is to the unit being wood to wood, or the expense of going brick to brick to do the same, for the same purpose. So, that could be kind of an argument of issue. And would it be fair? I don't know. I mean, we're always trying to approve the city, and we do make considerate, or we do take consideration for people that want to build within the city, the old downtown especially, because a lot build and a new structure on it, and people living here is just in addition to our city. So, in all due fairness, with considerations that we do consider for the old downtown, I think we need to strongly consider that. If we allow one, because it does complement the structure, and then someone is forced to do something that's three times more expense, that, that, we need to think about that.
John, when you refer to the old downtown, do you mean the central business district?
No, I mean the old downtown. The old downtown has always been the downtown district, as well as the residents that make up the old downtown district.
Is that designated somewhere? I understand there's an overlay that encompasses all of the old downtown.
Jim has been introduced to that one a lot, too, in the planning and zoning, because every time, well, not every time, but a lot, when people come in, and for instance, they have plans for a new residence or duplex or something on a smaller lot than, say, what is now the minimum that would be considered for a new dwelling? Well, we've got lots in town that are smaller than that, and so you have, we have to give consideration, and seven years ago, I believe, six or seven years ago, we discussed that in length, to consider that, so that we wouldn't restrict people to not have any interest to want to build here. And in the old downtown area, there weren't a lot that came available.
Okay, well, maybe we could ask Jim to define the difference between the central business district and the old town overlay.
Sure, I'll leave it personal. If there are any questions. There is something defined in the cards or documents called the old town residential district, and it is strictly defined by, defined by street. So it's very specific, you could draw it on out. It does include more than just the business area, it includes a lot of things.
It includes more than the central business district?
Yes, sir.
And it does, it does have definite street boundaries?
It does, indeed.
I do have a suggestion, maybe that could be of this item, that we think we could have like a workshop on it, where we can actually have some kind of discuss.
Myself and staff would be willing to do that. I think if that's, if that's referred, we could certainly do that together, and it would probably be a more useful exercise, unless, you know, someone had a definition, the working definition that they wanted to, but otherwise, you know, I think, I think if we wanted to do that, it would be very, very harsh.
Can we get a copy of the first one?
Yes, absolutely.
No, we're good.
Yeah, as far as the materials...
Other...
Yeah, there may be actually several, as I've, as I've looked more at this, there's probably several pieces of that that we could give an application to. Really, as far as the materials currently, it is just that the materials need to be complementary. That's, that's the, that's the only definition beyond, you know, the size and those kinds of things. So, so that's what caused us to pause the last meeting, was to make sure that we understood what that really was to, on a, on a, on a conservative side.
So you want us to define complementary order between now and the next meeting?
I don't think that would be necessary. I mean, what I would like to do is to take the mayor's recommendation, and we could do a workshop. I don't, give me an idea if we have any applications currently, but that would be...
Okay, so the recommendation is to table this item in favor of the workshop session to address in the near future.
We've got a spread coming on there, people are gonna wanna do things.
Yeah, we'll, we'll visit the calendar, I'll have T around, we'll get our calendar, and see if we can do that. Tina, do you need a motion to take? Is it easier for me to draw?
I entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we schedule a workshop, this is for the discussion. Second.
Councilman Smith makes a motion to schedule a workshop to discuss this item before the next council meeting. Councilman Plake seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Passes. This evening, I don't believe we have an executive, executive session, so we will move on to the open meeting, to the city manager's report.
Very briefly, Mayor Council, I just wanted to update you on a couple of things. One is, we've been, since Andy has been on board with Public Works, we've been looking at your, your transfer last meeting of some funding to address some sewer issues in the city, including Clement Street and Roman's business here as well. And so, we're currently in the process of doing just that. Andy's in sixth, sixth of the day, we've already met multiple times about that, and it's been very gracious to get caught up on that very quickly. So that will be for the, for the residents' benefit, that will be forthcoming. Also, just a couple of other things of note. One is that the city will be improving on our bid process, and our staff is helping me to improve on that as well. So we're going to be creating a comprehensive vendor list, and I wanted the, the public to be aware that if you or someone you know has a business that you would like to have to be included in our comprehensive vendor list, that we would request that, and that that would give the opportunity for us to make more people aware when we go off the bids for, for various projects within the city. Outside of that, I just wanted to say also that our staff has been working very tirelessly, and I just wanna again give them credit for, for helping, helping us move at a very quick pace since I've gotten here, so thank you all, staff. Thank you for the opportunity, again, for us to bring these items for you. And the other piece I wanted to say was the, the next council meeting, we revisited some of the ordinances, and our council meetings are scheduled, are supposed to be scheduled for the second, fourth, Tuesdays of the month, and so, with the mayor's request, we were going to go with that schedule, and of course, I moved it to six thirty, and I hope that that will help us all get out of here a little bit quicker. So, thank you all again.
Moving on to sixteen, mayor and council comments. Councilman Mosby?
You got the good one?
Councilman Trammell? Councilman Gorman?
Or is it easier for me to draw?
Try and entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we schedule a workshop to spread the discussion. Second.
Councilor Smith makes a motion to schedule a workshop to discuss this item before the next council meeting. Councilor Plake second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes. This evening, I don't believe we have an executive, executive session, so we will move on to the open meeting, to the city manager's report.
Very briefly, Mayor Council, I just wanted to update you on a couple of things. One is, we've been, since Andy has been on board with the public parks, we've been looking at your transfer last meeting, some funding to address some sewer issues in the city, including Clement Street and Rome's business here as well. And so, we're currently in the process of doing just that. Andy's in sixth, sixth of the day, and we've already met multiple times about that, and it's been very gracious to get caught up on that very quickly. So that will be for the, for the residents' benefit, that will be forthcoming. Also, just a couple of other things of note. One is that the city will be improving on our bid process, and our staff is helping me to improve on that as well. So we're going to be creating a comprehensive vendor list, and I wanted the public to be aware that if you or someone you know has a business that you would like to have to be included in our comprehensive vendor list, that we would request that, and that that will give the opportunity for us to make more people aware when we go off the bids for various projects within the city. Outside of that, I just wanted to say also that our staff has been working very tirelessly, and just want to, again, give them credit for helping, helping us move at a very quick pace since I've gotten here. So thank you all, the staff. Thank you for the opportunity, again, for us to bring these out for you. And the other piece I wanted to say was the, the next council meeting, we revisited some of all ordinances, and our council meetings are scheduled, are supposed to be scheduled for the second, fourth, Tuesdays of the month. And so, at the mayor's request, we were going to go with that schedule. And of course, I've moved it to 6:30, and I hope that that will help us all get out of here a little bit quicker. So thank you all again.
Thank you. Moving on to sixteen, mayor and council comments. Councilor Mosby?
You got the good one.
Councilor Trammell?
Councilor Gorman?
Well, I do want to tell you I brought my own gavel tonight. So we are adjourned.
Hold that up again, Kim.